All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, February 8, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take your role, please?
Sure. Larry Fox.
Here.
Jeff Newsom.
Here.
Joe Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy. Mr. Murphy is absent.
All right, thank you. Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Kalani. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Approval of our January 25, 18 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom. We have a second, Grissom. Did it again. Sorry.
And a second from Commissioner Mitchell.
All those, are there any changes?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. I apologize for that, Sue. Next up, item six, our call to the public. Anyone?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move to item seven. A, this is the Heartland Town Square Plan Development PD Agreement. If you'd like to join us. Ed, what we'll do is we'll turn it over to the floor, over to Troy. Tell us why we're here, Troy, and a little bit of background, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Ikoff.
Okay. The Heartland Town Square Plan Development is generally located at the corner of M-59, which would be right through this area on the aerial, and 23, which is the north-south corridor here. The land is in this area, coming all the way over to Clark Road. It includes the Meyer Development that exists. It includes the area where Imagine Theater is proposed and is anticipated to start this spring. It includes the Taco Bell, all the way over to the new Culvers Restaurant. This project was approved as a plan development in 2008. As that plan development sets out the uses that are permitted in this property, it establishes the, almost like a new zoning ordinance for this area. It establishes landscape requirements, building architectural standards, setbacks, and so forth. And when this was created in 2008, it was created as a commercial area. And what I've got is an updated plan that essentially will show how it was laid out and approved as recently as what the, with the Imagine Theater. So this being M-59 at the bottom of the screen and 23 over on the side, and you can see in the green color, Imagine Theater. And then, of course, down here is the new Flagstar Bank that was just recently approved. Up here is the Meyer Department Store. What the applicant has come in and is requesting, and actually the applicant met with the Site Plan Review Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, to discuss a change in this northwest corner, which is about 20 acres. And that change would include converting this commercial area where this plan depicts a major retail tenant, a potential hotel, and then another retail or restaurant user over here. They came to the Site Plan Review Committee and indicated they had interest to change this to a residential use, which would mean amending the PD. The Planning Commission Subcommittee, Site Plan Review Committee, felt that that topic was really beyond the scope of a committee to advise the applicant properly on how to proceed, and that question would be better served in front of the entire Planning Commission, and then ultimately in front of the entire Township Board. So this process is being treated much like a PD itself, where there is a concept plan, and I guess we would be in that concept plan right now, even though there's no plan. The concept is to change this 20 acres in the northwest corner to residential. The Planning Commission is being asked to provide comments, not necessarily make a formal determination, but provide comments to advise the applicant on whether to proceed, and if they do proceed, what are going to be some of the major concerns or comments that the Planning Commission will have at the next phase. After the Planning Commission gives its comments, the applicant then will proceed to the Township Board, and that's tentatively scheduled for the Township Board's meeting February 20. And pending how those comments go, the applicant will then evaluate those comments and decide whether to proceed, and if they do, it would be a preliminary plan, which would be fairly detailed, showing exactly how it might be developed, and we would then have to establish essentially all of the residential ordinance requirements as part of this PD. So first question that you're being asked right now is the applicant saying they would like to convert this 20 acres to residential. There is no particular plan. However, the applicant has indicated they are currently working with a residential apartment builder, Redwood Apartments, Redwood Homes, and some information was included in the packet to kind of outline their product. So with that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments.
All right. I think what we'd like to do is have you introduce yourself for everybody that's not familiar, and what would you like to add?
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Troy. My name is Ed Ikoff. I'm the Senior Vice President of Development for Ramco Gershenson Properties Trust, the owners of the Heartland Town Square. And I'm here before the Planning Commission this evening to have a very preliminary conversation regarding a change in use to the PD agreement that Ramco entered into with the Township for the Heartland Town Square. You are well aware, as Ramco is, that the ability to lease this property has been challenging at best. When we did the plan development agreement, the world was a lot different. It was pre-2008, the Great Recession. Retailers and home builders were expanding at a much greater pace, and for the last, let's see, 2008 to 2017, nine years, we've struggled to do any... And we're very, very excited that that's about to happen. But when we brought the Imagine Theater to the table, it too changed the original plan development agreement, because we had anticipated that that center section would have two sections of retail facing each other. And again, with the strength of Brighton, the amount of retail that could possibly be developed, a significant amount of time before we would see the development happen. So I have asked my leasing department and the brokerage firm that represents our company for this parcel to open up their horizons in terms of who they're speaking to, and I said, please don't bring industrial. I doubt that the gateway to Heartland Township would be an industrial development. But if you found, you know, a nice office complex, or a medical complex, or some form of residential, to the Planning Commission, ask them if they're willing to... ...development agreement, but that's your decision in the end. So somehow in the plan development agreement, we would need to allow for residential, which it doesn't currently, and we would need to develop a second set of design standards, because the design standards that Ramco agreed to with the Township all apply to the, you know, shopping center resident, or commercial component. So I'm here on behalf of Ramco Gershenson Properties Trust tonight. I am not here on behalf of Redwood. The goal for me this evening is to see if the Township has an interest in allowing a change to the residential, and if the Planning Commission does, and then the Board of Trustees does, the next step, from my perspective, from Redwood's perspective, is they would like to come in and meet with the Site Plan Committee, like I did, and start having those conversations about what the community might look like. Redwood has a variety of communities that they have developed. They've developed 26 of them in the last three years, and they've been at different price points with different levels of finishes. And so I've shown them and explained to them the Plan Development Agreement design standards that I have for the shopping center, and that something similar would need to be negotiated with the Township. So at this juncture, again, I would just, and again, because I've been asked once before, what's the difference between purple and pink? In that northwest corner, I work for a real estate investment trust, we're a public entity, so the purple simply represents land that's in something called a taxable subsidiary, and the pink represents what's in a limited liability company. So the pink is what you're supposed to collect rent from, the purple is what I'm supposed to be selling, okay? We just made Imagine Green because that, you know, it's almost ready to close but hasn't quite yet. But it's both that outlet, one there, thank you, Troy, and the purple that we are discussing. And in terms of, you know, design standards, again, I want to really leave that negotiation for Redwood, because I, at this point, I have a term sheet with them. I don't even, you know, I have not entered into a purchase agreement with them yet. I didn't want to start spending too much, you know, legal money until I knew that the Township, you know, was willing to change the use. So that's kind of my intro. What can I possibly share with you beyond that? Or answer for you?
Well, I guess my first question, if I could, is you had no interest at all from any kind of hotel chain or anything like that, because that's kind of what it was originally slated for or hoped for, right?
One piece of it, you can see in the upper left-hand corner was, okay? Now, where the purple is next to Imagine, we now have that kind of slated as the hotel location, and we still do market it to hotels, but we have not found a flag yet that we have been able to enter into a ground lease or a sale with, no.
Got you.
But we do still have a space that we, in our mind, if we can do it, have allocated for a hotel.
Okay. That's good to hear.
I'm curious how this could affect, actually, Imagine Theater. I mean, I anticipated that Imagine Theater would be surrounded by commercial, you know, commercial types of restaurants, other types of establishments around there that would support that, and now we're kind of moving into this sort of mixed-use concept, really, by adding residential. And I'm not so su, I'm just wondering how that may play with regard to the other players as part of the overall plan of the PD, how that would still remain attractive to restaurants or other commercial uses. And I don't, maybe you can enlighten me on your, maybe you have some market studies or whatever, or how that might look from a design perspective.
First, we still have, leaving the two in purple for hotel, six out parcels to develop for, you know, that could be food uses. So I still have plenty of opportunities to bring additional food to the intersection. The challenge that we've had is that when you look at the immediate density of the intersection, I don't have enough people. That's my challenge. You know, and people are, you know, you may not like it, but people are driving the seven miles and going to Brighton. So to bring additional bodies here, you know, and on the 20 acres, they're talking about approximately, you know, 100 units or more, you know? That's families, that's bodies, that's, you know, shoppers, that's people who are going to go to the theater, people who will...
I get that part. I mean, I understand what you're coming for on that. I'm just wondering how it may affect your overall development. I'm concerned a little bit about that because of how you've got a, you're planning a theater, you've got a big box grocery store, you're planning a hotel, and then you're going to sort of stick single-family residential right in, smack dab in the middle of it. I'm not, I'm not a, hey, look, I'm not a, not a design planner or anything like that. I just, I just find it kind of...
Technically, it's multifamily, not single-family.
Or multifamily.
And Maple and Coolidge in Troy is a Kroger, Home Depot, Best, not Best, Bed Bath.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Maple.
Okay? And those apartments that are right in front of it, right on Maple Road, okay? And most of what is being developed today, or that's being purchased and redeveloped, is mixed-use. We've purchased recently, we being Ramco Gershenson, a property in Adina, Minnesota, and a property in Lincoln Park, Illinois, and we're under contract to buy a second property in a market of Chicago. That is the, you know, mixed-use, because the, we don't know where the end is going to be in terms of the current evolution of retail. We know that, and I just gave Troy an article, that the United States today has 24 square feet of, per capita of retail. The next closest developed country is the United Kingdom, and they only have five. And China only has two. And so in the capitalist country that we live in, which I'm very proud of, but part of the capitalist system allowed for development of a lot of commercial retail space. And what's happening with the internet is the internet is still less than 10% of retail sales, okay? And retail sales overall are absolutely up, but where retail sales are down is in the bricks-and-mortar stores.
Oh, I get, I totally get that part. I understand the fate of retail. I mean, I understand that part. I'm just, I, I would, I would, in my opinion, I, I'm not, I don't have any problem with the residential. I'm just wondering how it will affect the, since you're not, you're not built out on the commercial, is this going to evolve into more residential because you can't build out the other retail? Will it take away the, you know, will you be coming in here and say, well, the hotel is not going to happen, and nobody's going to want a hotel next to... You see where I'm going with this? Where I'm wondering is just how this is going to affect the overall plan that was originally looked at, aside from the retail, because I understand the retail issue.
And what I've tried to do in determining what portion, I mean, I didn't come in and ask for the piece between Big Boy and Meyer, right? Because of the road pattern, I mean, Heartland Road does dissect this already, and there would be a shared common road between Meyer and, you know, the residential, if in fact we do this. But it's kind of an entity unto itself. I mean, we already bought some of the...
Another residential, right.
And so I still have, if you look at all of the pink and Meyer, I mean, I still have a very large chunk of retail. This was designed to be 600,000 square feet, and what we're talking about removing from that original 600,000 square feet is only about 150. So, I mean, I still have a significant amount of GLA here. So, and again, as part of the PD, Meyer and Imagine are approving parties, so they need to sign off on whatever, you know, we agree to. I can't do this without their acknowledgement.
One final comment. I would be willing to consider, you know, looking at this and what's the multifamily type of, but it would have to be fairly, you know, higher, high-quality look to it. I think of like downtown Milford, if you, as you come approach downtown Milford from the north and you're proceeding south of Milford Road, there's some multifamily housing, townhomes that kind of come in there. You've got some townhomes that are right near the Kroger Plaza that's on Commerce and Milford Road, or not Milford Road. I mean, I'm thinking, if that's what you're looking to do, I'd like to see something more in that, is what I would be looking for. I will tell you, I do not like what I see at Latson Road.
And that is not what they're planning on developing?
I, I, I don't know if the builder is here.
Nope.
But I'm, the product that is out there is not something I could support.
Yeah. And that's fine. Again, I'll let the, that potential developer, and again, I would be selling the land, and so they would be developing it, and they would negotiate the design standards with you. And some things work out and some things don't.
Right. Yeah. I'm not opposed at all to residential in this development. You know, I think it fits, especially the level that you're bringing, but I do share the same comments as Commissioner Kalani there. Yeah, I don't like what I see at Latson Road. I don't like what I see here on the, on the examples that you've given us, and we've had a few opportunities for some multi-level, multifamily, that didn't come to fruition in the Township, and this seems like it would be a perfect opportunity for something like that. You're buffered on all sides, it's a high-density development, and I don't see any reason why something like that wouldn't fit here.
Just a question. Are you aware if Redwood builds multi-leveled?
I do not believe they do, but I can't swear that 100%. The communities that I'm aware of are all single-family ranch-style attached garage-type developments.
Sue, do you have any?
You know, I think you guys expressed exactly, you know, my feelings the same. I've gone by the Latson Road intersection, too, and not happy at all with that look, but I do feel that residential, if any spot you've located in, you know, the spot it belongs, so really can't add any more comments than the others already have added.
Keith? I have quite a few. I may not mention all of them, but first of all, almost your first sentence, you said something about difficult to establish any more retail out there, can't get them to come. I, I guess we have to take your word for it, because if we look around the rest of the county, and very close cities and townships in our area seem to be growing every year with more and more retail and some commercial property developments. And maybe one of the reasons people drive the extra seven miles to Brighton is because there's nothing here for them, so they keep on going. So, you know, what's chicken or the egg first? Maybe they just need a reason to stop. Once we get some reasons, they'll get more and more people to stop. The residential's already building in the area, so there's more rooftops. And the other thing is, I'm, I'm just disappointed that that development hasn't taken off more. You see a lot of other commercials in the last couple of years, a lot of other areas that seem to be growing, and they're just, all we saw was an Imagine and a Culvers in the last six months to a year. And just looking at your report that Ross sent us on retail, there's a lot of businesses there that are expanding, and I think quite a few of the people in Heartland would enjoy having and support. And there's people, the first thing they wanted, they were excited about when we approved that development down there, they said, we're finally going to get our family restaurant. Well, we don't have it yet. And now we're giving up more commercial, that's going to be the biggest thing people are going to be concerned about, we're giving up potential commercial space for residential. We've already turned away a developer because we didn't want to give away commercial space in another area. And it's just hard for me to justify, at least, I understand your point of view, retail's changing, but there's still a lot of retail out there. And the only other thing I'd kind of like to add is that the only way, and I think you heard it from the rest of the commissioners, the only way that I think the Township would accept residential there is the right development. And yeah, we'll work with the developer to make sure the standards are high, but because he's part of your PD, I think we're going to want some extra higher standards, design standards in your pattern book that you've included for the rest of your development to drive these developers into understanding that we're looking for something above and beyond a typical residential MDR development. Okay, that's kind of all I got for now.
Mike, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't think anything.
I think there's a consensus very, pretty much about allowing for residential, but I think it's the quality of the residential that we would like to see.
Yeah.
Would you agree with that?
I would. I haven't said much here. I did in the informal, I think, for to share my thoughts with everybody that wasn't there. I think if we're going to add a residential component anywhere in the area, it seems natural that it be that corner. It's a transition out of the village that just gets extended in. My concern will be, what is it? And that will come in the next step. I would only ask you, having been doing this for many, many, many years, is that this market, this, this property, as you're marketing it to Redwood, that they understand in advance the standard program isn't going to work here in Heartland? Because the worst thing that could happen is if you go through a sale with him, and then he comes in to amend the PD, and we go, well, wait a minute here, this ain't going to happen. And then we get the black eye out of it because we're being difficult. We're telling you, I'm hearing here, for the right development, we can work with it. They just have to know that the right development isn't what we've seen so far, and they're going to have to up their game. And I, we haven't talked about design standards, but that's my opinion.
I'm no stranger to Heartland Township, and I've acknowledged, you know, upfront that, you know, I have a fiduciary responsibility to bring all opportunities to the table.
Right.
And some of them work and some of them don't. I don't have a lot of experience with this particular developer. At the moment, they're the only one that I have. Doesn't mean that another one may or may not come along. They may surprise us, or they may not.
All right.
But the question really, and I appreciate the feedback, which I will make sure that they, again, hear again, because they've already heard it. But again, the main purpose tonight is just for me to know how much time, energy to invest in trying to figure this out.
I think you pretty much got that. I would also agree with your earlier statement. Troy and I have talked about this, an amendment to the PD is probably going to be the appropriate way to go. Why pull it apart and have another one?
Right.
Let's just modify the one we've got to accommodate what this change is should you decide to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, just one other comment for your benefit.
Sure.
These rent ranges that you're aiming for here are pretty similar to what they were aiming at in multi-level. They were thinking they could get about the same.
I don't know...
I think it was 1,100 to 1,900 or something.
It was a big number. Oh, I thought it was.
This, you were saying here, 1,200 to 22, so it's pretty close. It's the same range. And you can probably get more units on there. And I'm not opposed to that.
Okay. I don't know if they are or aren't. But thank you for the comment.
Any other information you'd like to share with them, Troy?
I did have an email from Commissioner Murphy. He was not able to be here tonight. He did express his thoughts on this. He did comment that this project was originally planned for a well-planned balance of mixed commercial, and he could not support the request to rezone this area to residential. So I'll share that comment. However, he did not hear anything presented tonight. So just so you're aware of that.
Okay. Anybody else this evening? Ed, anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right, well...
Appreciate the feedback.
Yes, thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move to item eight, call to the public. Anyone? None? Planners report, Troy?
I do have a couple things. I received just today a Rose Township master plan update. I sent an email out to you today. In that email, you have the letter that they sent me, and the letter says they've attached their master plan. They, they did not. So what I did is went to their website and put a link in the email to their website. If you'll just scroll down, you'll be able to find their master plan. It's 100 and some...
It's 100 and some pages long. So I did want to bring that to your attention. Second item, I do have a meeting with Heartland Schools next week. They've reached out to me and want to have a discussion on new developments going on in the Heartland Township. So I do plan to meet with them. They're interested in the number of land use permits we've issued in some of our recent residential subdivisions. I'm sure they're interested in hearing about all sorts of new development that we've been dealing with. So I will be talking with them next Wednesday. Also, I've been asked to talk to you about potential meeting dates with a joint meeting with the Township Board in March. It's my understanding that in the past, the Board has indicated the odd Thursdays, the Thursdays that the Planning Commission does not meet, was generally looked at as a target. It's my understanding the Board is not able to do that. So they would have to be other nights than Thursdays. And it looks like we will have both meetings on Thursday, so I'd be interested in hearing any comments from you so that I can share for a joint meeting with the Board for a meeting in March.
They norm, they normally meet on Tuesdays, is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
Could we go to their opposite Tuesday meetings? What, you guys first and third Tuesdays, I think?
Yeah, we're usually first and third Tuesdays.
Could we look at...
Off Tuesdays are fine, too. We typically will, it's not unusual for us to hold a work session on...
Maybe a second and a fourth Thursday, or Tuesday, I mean, which would be the 13th and the 27th? Anybody around, or...
Yep, that works.
How about you, Keith?
I might be around the 27th. I will not be around the 13th.
Okay. Sue, anything for you?
I have to move something, but I can't.
You could do 13 or 27?
Yeah.
Okay. So Troy, do you want to try those?
Yep, I will. Thank you very much. That's it, that's all I got.
Okay. Any committee reports? Anything? Any comments, anyone? Okay. We need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A opposed motion carries. We are done.